Okay, we are live on YouTube. I'm ready to.
You are, I'm still sitting on Zoom, you let me in.
Yeah.
Thank you everyone, I'd like to call and order this meeting of the Finance Committee Thursday, January 14th, 2021, 8:30 a.m.
Is your mic on?
I don't even have it near me. Clearly out of practice, so we'll do that again. Good morning, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Finance Committee Thursday, January 14th, 2021. We will begin today with a review of the December 2021 financial report. Mr. Rudel.
So it's the financial report through December. We are currently projecting a year-end deficit of $2,92,166. Of that, we have reopening expenditures of $2.6 million. The General Education RCs are forecasting a positive $363,000, while the Special Education RCs are forecasting a positive $214,000. We'll go through some of the highlights. Similar to last month, there is a positive surplus in curriculum supervision, and that relates to some turnover in the library supervision. Student intern shows a favorable balance as one intern in the fall semester was unfilled. Science supplies are favorable due to a change in the scheduling at the high school, as discussed during the budget. The China exchange trip is not expected to occur this year. And then science equipment has a small favorable balance. Moving to Fitch, we are forecasting some positive variances in some supply accounts totaling $5,000. Similar to last month, RC 3, the middle school, there are some clubs and councils that are not being filled, including the field trip coordinator, literary magazine, and some music stipends. That leaves a positive surplus of a little over $10,000. Hinley Homes also have a positive surplus in some clubs and councils that are not being filled this year. Moving to Oxford, similar to last month, we do have a small favorable balance in the teacher aid account of a little over $3,000. Student intern shows a favorable balance, and that was due to a lack of available interns. And then in clubs and councils, one club is confirmed not to be filled, the literary magazine. Similar to last month, Royal has a small favorable balance in teacher salaries, as does Tokeneek in RC 10 for a little over $2,200. Moving to athletics, this is where some of the changes occurred from previous months. We are still forecasting the favorable balance of $2,600 in the Assistant Athletic Director position. That position's been filled, but there was a period of time in which it was vacant. We are forecasting a full-year surplus of $33,500 for custodial overtime related to building rentals, as we are not anticipating renting out our buildings this school year. The weight room, $10,000 intramurals, a full year of just over $46,000. Transportation in athletics is showing a favorable balance of $51,730, and that was really due to the change in the fall sports season. Interscholastic officials shows a favorable balance of $12,000, and again, that is due to the change in the fall sports season as well. Moving to maintenance, RC 12, we are showing a favorable balance of $6,800 in professional meetings. Due to COVID, there are no those conferences that are attended by facilities that are not occurring. Furniture is showing a favorable balance of $25,000. Given that we've actually moved a lot of the furniture out into Conex boxes to maximize social distancing, we are not anticipating the need for those furniture funds this year. And then similar to last month, the use of fields has a positive surplus of about $70,000. Our building rentals are a negative $69,000. It's essentially a wash between the two accounts. Moving to clubs and councils, RC 13, we do have a favorable balance of $6,300, and again, that's some unfilled clubs and councils due to the COVID situation. And then transportation, $5,700, as those field trips are not going to occur this year. Moving to RC 15, technology, similar to last month, we have $5,500 in salary savings due to turnover position in that one of those staff member accounts. New to this forecast is RC 16, administration. The DMG conference was not held in person, and so that did leave a favorable balance of $2,200. RC 18, contract support, is a favorable balance of $48,046, as all the non-certified contracts are settled, and we did have savings in the secretaries, paraprofessional, and nursing contracts that came in under budget. Under recruitment, there's a $1,500 savings due to the cancellation of the CES job fair. RC 19, local travel is about $3,200. We just have less itinerary travel. And then field trips, again, $37,500, as we're not anticipating field trips for this school year. RC 23, summer school and continuing education, the adult ed contracted services is a favorable $4,500, and this is based on what we are to be billed by the Stanford Public Schools, who we contract out our adult ed program. And then Darian Summer School still shows a favorable balance of a little over $2,000 in their revenue account. RC 24, special ed, the speech therapist still shows a favorable balance of $92,000. That is a speech therapist who's out on an unpaid leave of absence. Teacher aid shows a favorable balance of about $37,000. We do have a couple one-to-one pairs that are no longer needed, as the students have gone remote. Transportation driver has a favorable balance of about $8,000. Computer software is forecasted at a slight deficit of $12,500, which we would anticipate a future transfer at another meeting, and that's for additional technology software that has been recommended through the PPT program. In district transportation shows a favorable balance of about $12,000, as there's not 180 school days. At district transportation shows a favorable balance of $48,000. Tuition public school is a positive $142, and while private school is a positive $58,000. Excess costs, we still are showing the current forecast of $2.2 million, or about $99,000 under budget. We have not been, we have not confirmed what the reimbursement rate will be, but so we are still forecasting that low end of the range we were provided of 67.5%. We should receive our first payment at the end of February, and that's when we'll probably know what the reimbursement rate will be, though it could be adjusted in the spring. RC 25, fixed, we are showing a favorable balance of $36,000. We are assuming we will not run those two late buses at the middle school. We are also only going to be paying first student 85% of the bill for fully remote days, which will factor into that cost savings as well. Similar to the previous month, sewer costs are now forecasted to be under budget by about $12,000. That's really a product of the look back at the previous year, where schools were closed, so there was obviously less usage. Property insurance is still positive $1,100. Unemployment is forecasted at a deficit of $40,000, a little over $40,000. That is one of the items that we're recommending a transfer for this month. RC 26, ELP, we are forecasting a favorable balance of about $15,000, and it's less due to less enrollment, and so some positions have not been filled. Textbooks are forecasted at about $2,000 under budget, and again, that is due to less enrollment. And then ELP tuition is forecasted at a negative variance of about $89,000. We currently have 35 ELP students paying tuition against a budget of 48. There was a question at the last meeting, how many of, do we know how many students didn't enroll because of COVID? In talking to Laura, we know of at least three that decided not to enroll because of COVID. Based on those three, it would be about $20,000 in revenue. Since we have reopening expenditures as the next topic, I'll wait for RC 28, and then the transfers for the third.
Any questions? Rich, with excess cost, are we able, let me see if I can ask this question the right way. Any new types of costs because of COVID on any individual student's kind of expenses? Will the state recognize those? Will we try to apply for those as part of our excess cost reimbursement?
So as long as it meets that threshold of the $96,000 and change, we can.
Okay.
And we can show that we actually expensed it for that given student, we can.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Ritchie. Her button is stuck here.
Okay, I got it. So I just, so just looking at the total RC, general education, special education, that has a favorable balance of $578,000. And then when we take into account the reopening expenditures, we're looking at a over $2 million loss. So since we're still running a favorable balance, I just, could you just walk us through why that those, that number, we're still holding that number? We're not transferring all of the excess funds that we see there, because it seems like there's some pending stuff.
So included in those favorable balances are some of the dollar amounts that we're recommending to be transferred. So they stay in the General Education RCs until the board decides to approve the transfer. If the board decides not to approve the transfer, obviously, it would stay where it is. So if you were to move forward to the January financial report, assuming the board approves a lot of the transfers that are recommended in December, you'll see some of those general savings kind of shrink.
Right, and then that wouldn't take us down to zero.
Correct.
So there's still some pending things that we're not sure about. That's why we wouldn't make a transfer. I just want to make sure that people understand, you see that favorable balance in those, those, those general education and special education RCs, but we wouldn't take all that money and transfer it at this point for the COVID expenses, because we're still waiting, there's still uncertainty related.
Correct, so there's uncertainty regarding excess costs. I mean, we did flag about $100,000 shortfall there. If the reimbursement rate ends up being less, obviously, or if we're closed, let's say, for a long period of time, I mean, you had asked the question whether or not any expenses that we get can be applied to excess costs. It also works in reverse. If you close, and then you don't have those expenditures, you could potentially lose those reimbursement dollars as well. So we want to flag that. I mean, we did flag some software accounts within special education that will eventually need a transfer. And then while there's a transfer here for unemployment insurance, it's only a partial transfer of what we're expecting. So we are holding some of those dollar amounts for some of those unknowns.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to people when they saw.
Yeah, I imagine we also at the moment have anticipated expenses. I mean, mid-year, we would see some surpluses, to Mrs. Ritchie's point, in special education or regular education, if everything's going well anyway, but we have anticipated expenses.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? No, Mrs. Ritchie.
Sorry. So just under, my eyes are just starting to go. Under RC 12, the, we're, use of fields is surpassing our budget. Could you just, that's youth football, so that's the DJFL Senior League, is that correct?
So that's a part of it. Also, we did not have in-person Darian Summer School this year, so those fields were available for rent in the summer, and so we were able to rent those fields because of the availability. So that's why you see that large spike in use of fields. If this was a typical school year, and Darian Summer School was in person, a lot of those fields would have been taken, and we couldn't have rented them out, so you wouldn't have seen that large increase in use of field revenue.
Thank you. Any other questions? You can keep going.
Okay, sorry, RC is that under? Oh, RC 25, fixed. So do we have an estimate? We're only paying for student 85% for the fully remote days. Do we have an estimate of what that cost savings is? Is it embedded?
So that is built, so for the days that we went remote in that first week in January, and those three or four days in December is built into that $35,000 that's there. So we are not assuming that we're going to go fully remote for the forecast purposes for the rest of the year. Obviously, if there's a period of time where we go fully remote, basically, from today forward, we would obviously update the forecast for that 15%.
Right, but we would have no idea if that would happen at this point, so it wouldn't be wise to forecast. So the $35,000 is embedded already?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Rich, RC 24, speech therapist, when would we look to make that call on that transfer?
So as of right now, consultant services and speech are trending relatively well. So we would only really need it if there's an increase in the need for additional speech or consultant services in the account. As of right now, we're just holding that available balance. So that's one of the accounts that you had mentioned. Are we not going to transfer everything out? We're not going to recommend transferring that out, because it surely does need additional funds to cover for contracted speech or something like that. That's really where we would pull it from.
Okay. And on our sewer costs, I assume our rate, if I remember correctly, our rates were up. The favorable bounds here is only due to the fact that our usage is down.
So our rates are up for next year. They were up a little bit for this year. It does look at usage, and it's kind of a look back at usage. So we were closed from March through June, so there really were no, no usage of water flow. So that's really why we're anticipating that lower expenditure. If you fast forward to next year, assuming we're open, you have to take into account full-year usage plus the rate increase.
Okay. And just, I think the ELP that you noted, that three decided, that Mrs. Strayton can identify three students who decided not to come because of COVID. I think that answers a broader board question we have, and also can we, I'm going to hold that question. All right, I'm going to take that question back till it's a little better for under my head. Any other questions?
Oh, I guess it's COVID, so I'll wait, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. We will move on to the reopening of schools' projected expenditures.
So we are, as I mentioned, projecting COVID expenditures after grant reimbursement and the transfers that have been approved of $2.67 million. We do have transfers totaling $285,563 for board approval this month. If they are all approved, it would bring down that forecast to $2.38 million. We did break it down into the same categories as before, staffing, facilities, technology, athletics, transportation, and materials. Some of the changes from the previous month really include, so the nursing LPNs are contracted services. So for the days, the elementary schools, because they're in the elementary schools, are fully remote. We're not being billed for those days. For the period in December where we went fully remote, and then that first week in January, we did not utilize the outside cleaning service, because the buildings were empty and we had our own custodians. So we did save on the weekend fee for contracted cleaning in those areas. The lunch monitors at the middle and elementary schools, for the days we are fully remote, there's no lunch, so we did not have to pay them, and that brought that forecast down slightly. So obviously, if we have fully remote days going forward, that would change as well. The technician, we've only forecasted now one. We did ask for two. The pool did not really warrant finding a second one, given that it, its position ends as of right now, June 30th. So we are only, we updated the forecast to show only one technician. And then the campus monitors, only three of the four are currently filled. One of the high school ones is not filled, given that they're hybrid. And there were also periods of remote learning, there wasn't a need at this point to fill it. If we go fully in, there's potential it could be filled, so we are earmarking a little bit of money for that. But if we stay hybrid for the rest of the year, or we progress long enough where it's not going to be filled, that could come down a little bit. We did disencumber a little bit of money in plexiglass partitions, and other than that, oh, and then the other big change was in athletics. Talking to Chris Manfredoni, the Athletic Director, the assumed shortened season for swimming brought that cost down. Obviously, we've paid for the first fall season, but we have the swimming and gymnastics left, and so that's been brought down to about $122,000. We do have the bridge from last month's COVID expenditures to the forecast in this month, to show the ins and outs month over month.
Questions?
Would it be appropriate to talk about, so at this point, based somewhere we are as we move forward in the process, it would be your recommendation that we request an appropriation for that amount that we see here after our transfers are approved?
So that would be the forecasted deficit for the remainder of the year. If the decision is to kind of go once for an appropriation, I would recommend going for that $2.3 million. If there's a thought of going, let's say, to the town more than one time, you could look at an option of asking for an appropriation for what's been spent and encumbered, and then leave the forecast out, because you have some variability. But it really depends on whether or not you'd want to go once or more than once for an appropriation.
So what would be the amount right now that has been spent and encumbered?
We'll work up a schedule for that for the next board meeting, but we've spent about $1.4 million, and then we have some more encumbrances for the remainder of the year. I will say that some of the items that are encumbered, for example, is that weekend cleaning. We encumber for the full year, assuming we're going to have it for the full year. But again, if we go remote for a week, we'll have to disencumber a portion of those expenditures, and so the encumbrances could, you know, adjust up or down slightly depending on what happens for the remainder of that year.
So it would be, it would be my suggestion, probably, that what we do is, if you come with a recommendation of what we need, I think it's probably the Board of Finances purview to decide if they want to break up this appropriation. My recommendation to the board would be to enter in that, into that conversation with the Board of Finance, let them know what our expenditures are, and at least give a recommendation of what we need, and then they can figure out the mechanism.
I agree with that, I'm sorry. I agree with that to a degree, because the process is a long process. It doesn't involve just the Board of Finance, it involves the RTM. And I'll be frank, I don't think that that process being so long, if we have to go through it twice, I'm concerned about the timing, and if we need that, those additional funds at this point, if we only go for what's been spent and encumbered, I'm just concerned as we move along that we're going to be hitting June 30th and not have those funds in place, and we need the money to, we need to have the appropriation to spend the money. So I'm just concerned about that.
So I agree, and I think if the Finance Committee is going to be, we can have this conversation, if we'll be asked for a recommendation. I think what we want to do is go with, go with what we need. I think we need to be prepared that they have the mechanism for it, and so when we prepare those documents, I don't want to get caught. That's my exact concern. I don't want to get caught. It is a long process. I don't think we want to be going back every month looking for it. So as we prepare documents, and we can have a conversation if this is our recommendation to the board, but my recommendation to the board is, we need to give them everything we have and an understanding of why we're asking for this and the constraints of the timeline. I think we should be prepared that they have different mechanisms available to them. And so part of the story we tell has to be, you know, why we need as much as we do when we do.
So we'll look at, we'll, we'll look at the details of that, but it could be that we come back with a recommendation to, for instance, to go up to this night with the actual allocations outlined of what the expenditures and encumbrances and so on have been. But that's kind of.
Yes. I think, I think, I think we should make sure everybody's aware, and I think going forward, it would be great to have that as part of our presentation. What is, what has actually been spent, what is encumbered, and what is our total anticipated cost related to COVID? I would also say that as we move along in the process with the Board of Finance and the RTM, if we somehow get another grant, obviously, that can be our number, our figure going to the RTM and Board of Finance can be adjusted. If we see we're achieving additional cost savings, that also can be an adjustment, because the RTM would be able to adjust that number at the end of the process when they have their vote. So I think that's something to keep in mind, that it's very fluid. This is a very fluid situation, but we need to have an appropriation to spend money. So I think we need to start this process, and I think we need to go with the full amount, and with the understanding that we're going to be very transparent about what has been spent, what is encumbered, and what we anticipate as a total cost, knowing that we can adjust as we move along in the process. That's my view.
Yeah, my other, my other add on this would be, we, we have to prepare for the Board of Finance, but we know that the RTM is right around the corner. So if we can make sure that we either prepare documents, or Mr. Danine is here, Mr. Danine, we make sure we have outreach to RTM, F&amp;B, and Education. I don't know who's going to run first on this, but if we keep them in the loop and everyone is, is up to date, I think that'll make for a smoother process. So I know we've had conversations with Board of Finance, but we should make sure that F&amp;B and Education are in the loop as well, because someone will run first.
Okay, so they are. And just, I would circle in Seth, as well as the moderator. Okay, great, everybody's in the loop, we're good to go.
Any other questions on the appropriation?
You guys both covered mine, thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, budget transfers for 2021.
So we have 12 transfers, 11 relate to COVID, one does not. The first one is for $19,832, and this is to cover resource materials for math, for the additional sections that were due to social distancing. We are taking the funds from the savings from the China exchange trip, some staff development, recruitment that was flagged, music, transportation, and field trips. The second is for $1,990 to cover resource materials for ELP due to COVID, and we are taking that from the savings in ELP textbooks. The third one is for $978, and that is to develop the reopening plan, and we are taking the savings from the canceled DMG conference that was flagged earlier. $7,926 for the art materials that related to COVID, and we are taking that from some professional meeting savings. The next transfer is for $67,860. That was the cost of YMCA for girls' swimming, and we are taking that from the savings in officials, transportation, and intramurals. $13,000 for the anticipated cost for the YMCA, and again, taking that from intramurals as well. $41,760 for the anticipated cost of swimming, and taking that from some savings in intramurals and the Assistant Director of Athletics. Storage boxes, the Conex boxes, $32,163, taking the savings from the furniture account that we flagged, as well as some clubs that are not running. A partial $33,500 to fund some of the custodial overtime that's anticipated for this year, and the savings from not having the YMCA building rentals this year. And then $32,530 for the cost of literacy, literacy materials due to COVID, and taking that from some of the material accounts that we flagged that had positive balances, along with clubs and councils that are not running. And then $33,884 for police services for reopening schools, primarily at Middlesex and Oxford, and then taking that from some of the savings related to transportation due to hybrid learning. And then the one non-COVID transfer is $28,000 for unemployment insurance, and we are recommending taking that from some salary savings from teacher aid positions, both in ELP, the copy center, and then the transportation positions.
Mrs. Ritchie, just on the facilities, overtime for the YMCA, that's the cleaning related to, I'm trying to remember, the custodial, so it's all the cleaning up after the.
So it's the cleaning up, and then ensuring that if it's, let's say, on a weekend or late at night, that they can get into the building, custodian has to be present. So we are assuming that we're not going to be renting out our facilities for the remainder of the year, and it's taking that total budget amount, and then moving it to overtime for cleaning the buildings.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rich. Great presentation, as always. Can, can you talk a little bit of our, about our experience with healthcare?
For the, for this year?
For this year, yeah.
Our trend has not been good. As you noticed, as you remember, last year, we were initially given a 34% renewal rate from Connecticut Air. We had some significant expenditures. We are fully insured, so we pay a flat amount every month, depending on the makeup of the insurance packages we have, based on how many single packages, employee plus one or family packages. While the trend is slightly improved from last year, the trend is not really working out favorably, and one would expect during a pandemic, health insurance would be rather high. We did negotiate a rate cap when we moved to Anthem, a 7.95%. We did ask our insurance provider, had we not had that rate cap, what would be the anticipated increase? And he would, he looked at it as about a plus 19% rate increase that we would have received, so not quite that 34%, but obviously, 19% would have been quite unmanageable.
So kudos for the negotiation of the rate cap, because 34% was hard to swallow, 19 is still hard to swallow. Okay, so I guess we'll hear if you have to do anything more about that during the year.
Yep.
Okay. Mrs. Parent?
Are there, is there continuing to be more police and fire expenses due to, anecdotally, I've just noticed that there's a police officer stationed at the, by the middle school almost daily. Is that, is that continuing? Is that?
Not necessarily for reopening. I mean, they do have the SRO there. There have been police added to Oxford recently because of the construction that's going on, but that's not necessarily due to reopening, right?
No, I think it just shows the effect of COVID on our budget this year, for sure. Very good presentation, very clear. Thank you, Mr. Rudel. Are there any other questions? I think we will look to bring this to the board on Tuesday, our next meeting on Tuesday. Dr. Bradley, anything?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that you would like the administration to bring back a specific recommendation regarding the appropriation for discussion?
I think it would be valuable, at least from the Finance Committee's viewpoint, to bring back a recommendation on how to move forward with the appropriation. I think that'll help give the conversation some context. I think Mrs. Ritchie and I are very clear, we'd like to bring all the information, because of the full amount, given the timing. of the full amount, given the timing, is going to be pretty valuable, or at least as much of, as much of appropriation as we can.
Somebody brought up the idea of using the wording "up to" or "not exceeding" that two-point, almost 2.4 number, so including that, I think would be helpful.
And also, what we could also include is that this is a specific appropriation for COVID expenses, and if we don't utilize the full appropriation, we would return any unutilized funds to the town. So that would be separate from our regular operating appropriation, in my view.
Yeah, so I think maybe we, let's just look at the different mechanisms, but certainly bringing forward the true expense, because we won't have three months, and right now, we have been running a deficit, and at some point, we're going to need to true that up, and June 30th looms a lot closer for, for finance people than it does on your day-to-day. So that would be great. With that, I will open it up to public comment. Do we see any hands raised? I think we just have one person on, maybe two.
If you would like to speak during public comment, click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raise hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. It looks like there is no public comment.
All right, with that, we will take a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Ritchie, Mrs. Ritchie, Mrs. Parent, on favor? That is yes. Thank you, everybody.